All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Town of Situate Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, July 24th, 2018. At this moment, I'd like to accept an agenda from the board. Motion by Ms. Kerman, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All those in favor, accept.
Aye.
She's unanimous. Moving on to our first item, our walk-ins. Are there any walk-ins here this evening? Come on over, if you don't mind. And, that would be great. Good evening.
Good evening. This is the board chair doing. Anne Barvino, Tenpenny Road, speaking as chairman of the planning board. We are still looking for an alternate member, and we are accepting applications. Please, please come and join the line. Lots going on, and we need to reach an alternate. And then, secondly, as I'm sure you know, Hingham Institute, the branch in North Situate, is leasing as of September 15th. Which, for North Situate, given all of the whatever in North Situate, I think it's a tremendous level. I understand that most people do their banking online, or they have their phones, or whatever, but it is still more heightened, ATM machines. There is parking, the next branch is a mile and three quarters up the road, and the parking up there is terrible. So, I don't know if you have any influence, maybe it is too late, but just to give you a heads up, that as of September 15th, there is room, and it is truly unfortunate. So, give it your time.
Thank you. That's something, certainly begs the question whether the board would be interested in maybe sending a letter to the Hingham Institute, informing them of our disappointment of their decision to leave, and maybe if they reconsider, at least at a minimum, to maintain some form of ATM in the North Situate location, at least for some of the residents. I don't know if that's something the board would like or not, if they consider it.
I think it's a good idea.
There's a consensus, and I'd be happy to draft that, and we'll send them that.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to any other walk-ins. Seeing none, how about our report of the town administrator? Jim, good afternoon.
Two things real quick. Work on Jericho and Hadley, we've got the road ground, we did a base coat, within the next week or so, you'll see the company coming in, and they'll put in granite curbing to get the sidewalk done. When we finish the sidewalk, we'll come back and finish that stretch of road, so people need to slow down on that, because the manhole covers and the water service is well exposed, but they should see some work. If you get on there now, the curbing's all marked out, so we expect the company this week and next week to get out and do the sidewalk, they'll be able to finish that.
Great.
One other report, the town was notified last week by the Department of Energy Resources, Green Communities Division, that we've received an award of $242,720 for Green Communities. This is a competitive grant, I sent you the breakdown for energy projects all across the town. Just let the board know, that brings the total that Situate has received up to $912,117 for Green Communities. So, Situate remains on the cutting edge of municipalities in terms of going green and reducing our energy use, so congratulations. Kevin Kelly does most of the work on that.
That's great.
Yeah. Tony?
Just a question on the roads there. So, that's the road that comes down by Situate Tavern.
Correct.
We're kind of changing the landscape a little bit of it, because people drive pretty quickly around there and don't really stop on that sign there. Are we taking the sidewalk? Is that part of this as well?
There'll still be a new sidewalk put in, so there'll still be a sidewalk there.
All the way to Turner?
All the way to Turner, yep.
Great. And there, is there going to be a median in there, or what do we decide?
There's not going to be an island, the, if you're coming, down Turner towards the community center, down Hadley, sorry, towards the community center. When you get to Situate Tavern, that corner's very rounded right now, so that corner's going to come out and square more, so you'll have to come to that intersection of Jericho, stop, and then turn. But the sidewalk will go all the way up, from where it is now, all the way up to the intersection of Turner.
Great.
Yeah. I think it's great, because if you walk on the sidewalk going down Hadley Road, it's, over the years, they've built up over the sidewalk, and it's really dangerous, you can walk off, you know, turn and turn your ankle and everything, so I'm like, it'll be nice. The second thing is, I think, I'm not sure if they're going to be putting some kind of like cement down, Tony, but there is, or whether it's going to be painted.
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 Of a painted island in the middle.
Painted island, and that's it, yeah.
To put a, an actual island, some of the larger trucks and stuff are, a truck with a boat might have a trouble getting around that corner, so we're going to paint an island on there, but we won't actually put one.
Is it going to have that rubber material on it?
I'd have to ask Kevin, or maybe Sean knows, if he comes in, but I'm not sure.
Karen?
I just had a question about the grant. Is that to reimburse for work done, or is that to apply for new projects?
New work.
New work, great.
Yep.
Just so people understand, there's like lighting at Cushing Elementary School, lighting at the high school, lighting at Wampatuck, Cushing Elementary School, it's going to be with the domestic hot water heater replacement, lighting at the wastewater department, there's going to be transformers at the wastewater department, Musquesque Pond Pumping Station, there're going to be different drivers, variable frequencies to save energy, and, you know, just, there's a lot that's going to be benefiting all our public structures.
It's a very competitive grant program, so Kevin did a really good job to get all those projects.
And this is less than a million dollars in the past five years, something like that, I think?
It's great.
Or is it four? That's just, that's great.
It's phenomenal.
Yeah, so.
One other question for Jim.
Sure.
The, have we started the work on the Cushing Field?
No, I just met on that last week to review that bid, Tony, on reusing the oil tank, so they were good with that.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
It'll be out next week, Kevin's back next week, we'll get it and get it out.
So, in the fall, we could probably reseed it?
Hopefully, yeah, yeah. We'll have to look at the timeline and talk to the superintendent, make sure the timeline fits. If it doesn't fit, then it might have to go on a school vacation, but we didn't have the money to do it buying a new tank, so this gives us the money to get it done by reusing an old tank and cleaning it up.
Great. Question? Anyone else? Jim, thank you, that's good. Moving on to an outdoor entertainment for 38 Williamsburg Lane. Tara and Tara, if you want to come on up, please. This is for August 11th, for DJ from 7:00 PM till 11:00 PM. Good evening, how are you?
Good.
So, you're looking to have some outdoor entertainment music for your neighborhood, or for a party, and you've invited the neighbors, and you've notified the neighbors of it, so they know it? Good. Is this the first time you, first time you've done it, or?
You said it's a graduation party?
Okay, so it's, I got you. Good. Any questions from the board?
Nope. I know the alumnus, and so I think they'll be very responsible with their, their timing.
What kind of music?
It's a DJ.
DJ, oh, there it is, right.
Seven to 11.
Great.
It's like a rule, if you invite the neighbors, they can't complain when they're coming on.
Exactly, exactly how it goes.
Develop the surrounding neighbors, remember, you're chief.
Good. Motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Tara and Tara, alumna at, for a DJ at a private party, August 11th, 2018, in 38 Williamsburg Lane, from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Ms. Kerman. Shepers, you two are killing me. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you, folks, appreciate it.
Have a great party.
Congratulations.
All right, can we move on to, I know you guys with the Cs. Going to move on to the next discussion vote, annual block party of an outdoor entertainment permit for a live band, a band at Lincoln Ave. Do we have anybody here? Yes.
Yes.
Come on up.
You look familiar.
So, John, right?
Yes, it is.
John, you and Alex are looking to have a big party, huh?
Yes.
I think this is the third or fourth time you guys have done this.
Fourth time.
Fourth time?
That's awesome.
So, if I'm not, and you're shutting off Michael Ave, so you're going to have access to be able to go around, it's just Michael Ave that you can't go up with vehicles.
Lincoln.
Or Lincoln, Lincoln, I'm sorry, Lincoln. Good. And you're looking to have it from 5:00 PM until 10:00 PM, correct?
Yes.
All right, good. It says Neighborhood Association, is that like the Third Cliff?
Exactly.
Neighborhood Association, good. All right. I have no questions, anybody else?
You did this last year, right?
You did, yeah.
Great. No complaints, I don't think we have anybody here that...
I'm in any state.
Great.
That's a good event.
I did have one question. I just didn't understand what, so at the, it says the parties on, at Alex's house?
Yeah, he's just willing to host it, because he has a porch up there, that's a little easier, a little wider than Michael, and, yeah.
Okay, but everybody's going to walk over anyway, so.
He was the president last year.
Okay. I just was confused. Okay.
Motion?
I'm sure.
Move to approve closing both ends of Lincoln Avenue for a block party on August 11th, 2018, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
John, congrats, enjoy.
Mr. Chair, is it second motion?
Oh, there is.
Oh. Oh, right.
Oh, yeah.
Which one would we just do?
So, we just did the closing of the block, so there's an entertainment.
So, move to approve outdoor entertainment permit for a block party at Lincoln Ave on August 11th, 2018, from 5 to 10. Thank you, Lorraine.
Motion by Ms. Kerman, by Ms. Canfield, seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Kerman. Discussion. Are you having amplified music? Is that a band, is that what, John, you're doing?
Yes.
Okay. Did you guys have that last year or soon?
Yeah.
Good. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go, congratulations. Enjoy.
Hey, Mr. Drew?
All right. Moving on to a discussion vote, special event permit, Cliff Challenge Road Race, scheduled for October 13th, from 6:30 AM until 11:00 AM at Jenkins School. Is Anne Marie here? Come on up, folks.
Good evening. Hi, Anne Marie.
Anne Marie?
Anne Marie.
Pleased to meet you. If you could just identify yourself for the record here.
Anne Marie Winchester.
And your address?
Uh, 2774 Durham Street, that's very...
Gotcha.
Sharon Tezini, 138 Monroe Road.
Good evening. So, how many years has this been? Has this been like the fifth year?
This is the first year.
First year.
This actually is an old race that was taking place, it was just renewed a few years ago.
Okay.
And Sharon has been working with her, Dan Harver, on Iona Race, Race Night, and she has hired him to manage the race for her.
Okay. So, if, I'm just trying to remember, I remember originally starting out at the Peggydy Beach Parking Lot, running around the cliffs, and then...
That was actually the Shore Run.
Shore Run?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
This one started at the St. Mary's Parish Center.
Okay. And then, so is this, I looked at the route, and I was just trying, I didn't participate when it went to Third Cliff, but is this the route that goes from First, Second, and Third Cliff? Is that, is that what this is, you're replicating?
It goes around Peggydy, and then up to Third Cliff.
Third Cliff, okay.
It's just a little bit shorter, because it's starting at Jenkins, it's starting at the Parish Center.
Gotcha. And the day of the week, is it a Saturday or Sunday?
Saturday.
Saturday. Okay. Okay. And you've probably talked to the police department, right, with?
Yes, they have copies of the course apps, I bought a lot of the same copies to the police chief in every town, as soon as I saw the department.
What I'm saying is, for purposes of having details, because it's a Saturday, with all of the traffic going up and down Kent Street, as well as to the dump, just, I know that the course is going to cross over that intersection, then comes back, and then it's going to go down on Kent Street, and then it will go off Old Kent Street to the Third Cliff. So, I just want to make sure.
Then when it comes back, and then go back to the other one.
And it goes up Greenfield, I think, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, all of those are street crossings, so any way that there's a street crossing, there will be, there will be these details up there.
Okay.
Typically, the final detail arrangements are made seven days maximum, really, ahead of the race, because it's really dependent on how many runners we have. If we have 100 runners, that's a standard number, police detail will be needed for those intersections. If you were to end up with 500 runners, then the police are probably required to have additional details just for crowd control.
Okay.
So, the exact number of details, they just put, I don't have that set up at this point.
Mention that, because I'm not sure, somewhere around here is when the boats come out, but I think it's after this, unless somebody knows.
It's a date?
Yes, it's way after.
October, yeah.
It's October 13th, so that's another thing, just to be cautious of.
Is that a holiday weekend? Is that?
Yeah, when's Columbus?
We got it.
We got it. How many people do you think will run?
As many as I can get. Typical first-year races get 100, 150, 250.
Is there a maximum that can be accommodated with the parking and all of that?
Um, you know, we've looked at the parking, and right now, based on our estimates, we're going to be fine with that. It's really a matter of watching the numbers, and if we need to pull an extra parking, then we'll have to make an alternate plan for that. But, I mean, we manage, right now, I've got 55 races on calendar for 2018, so I, it's pretty easy at this point to look at how registration's going, and saying, all right, this is going to meet, you know, our standard first-year road race, or we're going to have to come in and bring some, you know, some extra parking, some extra police, some extra volunteers, based on how registration's going, and see it pretty much out, right, as soon as it's out the gate, if all of that happens, until we will have a really good sense of what that's, that's going to be. And if it's anything outside of what we tell the police, then we always go back and run and question what we are taking, and it's, and it's not happening often, but it has happened where the numbers are, where significantly, we'll be excited, so.
Laura?
You're done?
That's okay. It's probably the same question.
Well, I'm going to follow up with, is the parking designated to be at St. Mary's, or where you?
At Jenkins.
So, all the parking will be at Jenkins School, and also your race tents will be at Jenkins School?
We've not really had any tents or...
You know, like where you register folks, and in the past, that's how it's usually been set up, right? You have a tent to register, and you give the food out, and you give the goodies out, and all that stuff. Is that also going, I'm just concerned that you don't have enough space, that's all.
We don't actually do that, we don't bring in a lot of structures, it's, you know, there's an inflatable arch that we put up, and if we have, you know, that would be out there at 6:30 in the morning, we would be out on the course, because we do a course mark, a climb mark, various directional markers, just to help with the, you know, setting for our shops.
Yeah.
I can do registration for 150 people on three tables.
Yeah, but I don't think there's, is there a place for 150 cars in Jenkins?
Well, one thing you have to take a look at is maybe satellite parking at the First Parish.
Well, that's all I'm suggesting, is that you reach out to the church and see if they can use it.
Which is across from the tax collector. There's parking there, that's public parking.
My only concern was, I'm talking to the church where I'm defined up here, and I didn't have one.
Right.
Oh.
Yep.
You know, I, I don't know, I obviously said it in the mornings at funerals, and I am for that right now.
Right.
But if you have 100 runners, you maybe have 40 cars.
Tony?
Yeah, I think that's important, because, is the race going down First Parish? Is it, what road is it going down? It's going down, what's the one on the vinyl?
No, it's going down First Parish.
Because if there's a wedding going on, that's going to be a mess.
Depends, but, you know, until this happens, I can go out and talk to them, but, um, I don't know if there is a wedding, and the time you know, because the race is at nine and a half, so.
Wedding's usually...
If there's any way you could go down Vinyl, instead of down, I mean, when you hit that intersection, that's where all the traffic is, but if you go one block west, you know, you would miss a ton of traffic, and you wouldn't even impact the church.
Right. I think you're right, I think you're more likely to hit a funeral than you will hit a wedding in the morning.
Mm-hmm.
And also, keeping in mind that if you have 100 runners coming through, it's not there. Right, so that intersection is...
Do we have the map?
Yes.
Page 15, Tony?
That intersection is maybe a third of a mile from the starting line.
Oh, so they'll be through it first.
So, they're going to be through that intersection by 9:07. They're going to get in about 9:03, and everyone will be through it at 9:07. It's not a long-term...
And then they do the loop and come back down, though?
Right. And then by the time they're coming back through, they're coming through in a different way.
But are they coming?
They'll, they'll have spread out at that point, so it's...
Right.
Okay.
So, that's, that's one thing that we do look at, that first, that's the two miles we, that'll be over by 9:30, the last person will be off the road by 9:30.
And there's a walk as well, or a fun run?
Yeah.
And that's just the loop at the hill?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the five mile?
Is the whole?
It's going to be the whole thing, but on the return on the five mile, they're not coming back through the center.
Right.
They're not coming back through that intersection. So, that, that will take longer, only because the runners will get spread out even further at that point, so they'll travel to longer, get them all across the finish line, but they'll be coming in to that side of the intersection.
My, I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm just telling you upfront, because there are a lot of fun runs and fun, runs that were for raising money for great charities, many of which are kind of no longer in existence. I think the only other one I know, I'm aware of, is the school, which took over, the Patterson Run, and there's the Turkey Trot, I guess, and Thanksgiving, and there's nothing else.
Does Nico do that?
No, I don't think they, they do that anymore, the biathlon, the biathlon's gone, I think.
They don't do the biathlon anymore.
But, so I'm for it. The only thing I was concerned about is that, maybe not this year, but going forward, you're on First Parish, you're on Kent Street on Saturday, that's always going to be a problem for traffic. Plus, when you come back on Greenfield Lane, anybody coming down on First Parish, they're going to, you're on Common Street, it looks like, too. So, I'm just saying that the layout will be, it kind of bogs, bogs down a lot of the traffic in town.
Well, they did it before for years, for like five years, and it wasn't an issue, it was for, I don't know if you remember, you might not, just because you have younger kids, but it was for Andrea Gaziano years ago, so that's what, and Sharon has, you know, sort of trying to restart this all up again, to get back to Dana. No, I'm just saying that there was...
That one's a little smaller than this one, because this one goes to Third Cliff, that one only went up and around the cliffs, went first and second.
No, it was the same two miles.
No, it was the same thing.
Right, but they didn't go to Third Cliff, because I ran it.
Yeah, they did.
It went to First Cliff and Second Cliff.
It took the short option.
The Shore Run.
The Shore Run is the one that actually expanded it, is what I'm saying.
The Shore Run that was on Memorial Day weekend, that was for high school, and that was just around the Peggydy Beach Church. This one, this one usually, it was in October, except for one year, I couldn't, I couldn't remember, that was last, and then I got it.
I think maybe you should run this one, John.
See what my surgeon says. So, getting back to it, I think, just be forewarned that, you know, we're dealing with potential in the future, but I have no issues with it, just make sure you have enough details, because when you have people on the road, drivers, you know, a little crazy out there, so just, just make sure you have enough details.
Yeah, we deal with that in everything.
Yep.
There's bad drivers everywhere.
Any other questions?
Question?
It's more for Lorraine. Why is the permit from 9 to 11, if there's, going to be there at 6:30? Should it be earlier than 9?
It's a 6:30.
I just want to make sure we give the proper time to that.
It's a 6:30.
It says 6:30 and 11.
On the agenda.
So, 6:30, okay, that's why, I just wanted to double check.
One other, and to that, to John's point, it says pending certificate of liability insurance, why is that delayed? Is that?
Um, my insurance company requires you to pay the insurance upfront, as soon as I apply for it, I have to pay, so if I did turn down the permit, I can get the money back, so then the charity has to take a loss, that doesn't happen.
Okay.
As soon as I get the permit, I can request it.
Okay.
We always follow up, yes.
Yep, okay.
Any other questions? Motion?
Move to approve a special permit to Sharon Tezini, in the Cliff Challenge to Stop Cancer Road Race, on October 13th, 2018, from 6:30 AM to 11:00 AM, pending receipt of certificate of liability insurance.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Kerman, all those in favor?
Aye.
Congrats, good luck, all right?
Thanks, Sharon.
Everyone, sign up.
Sign up.
Nice sunny day. Well, thank you very much.
We'll make John sign, the longer run this time.
Sure, we'll start training, we'll put together...
Maybe I should just sell them handy cards.
Get, talk to Ruth in the back, have her put something in the paper for you.
Excellent, great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
All right, moving on to a discussion vote, bus lease agreement, Paul Donlin from the school department, director of business and finance. Paul, how are you?
I'm wonderful.
I'm glad you're here in the summer, you know, your day off, you know, we're here in July, talking about buses, that's great.
I got to go to dinner down in Hingham with my daughter.
Whoa, 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 we don't go to dinner in Hingham, I mean, you gotta bring your daughter here, we have too many restaurants that are just so good.
That was close, I mean, he didn't want to come down with three.
Well, good, it's always good to have family time with your children. So, what do we have here? We're looking to, I thought we just leased buses?
We did, three years ago.
Three years ago, so the lease is up now?
Lease is up, and we're returning back 13, and we're going to lease 14, because one of the, we owned two buses, that we kept them, we, three or four years ago, we did this, and that, one of them is David's Tommy, it might not be a good idea, it might be be a good idea to get another lease, so we're gonna lease 14. We're gonna have three more next year, and the handicapped bus that we leased was for five years, so that's gonna be up in 2022.
Okay. So in other words, the bus, there is a bus that is for people who challenged physically. They're able to get on the bus because there's like, I think it's a ramp or some sort that's able to lift in the back.
It has a few less seats, but, uh-
So why wouldn't, you know, why, considering that we're leasing them, I thought there was an option on the last, uh, 13 to purchase at the end of the lease.
There certainly is.
And why wouldn't we not want to purchase them? Just, just for purposes for people to understand?
Um, 'cause we didn't want to outlay $750,000 to buy out 13 buses there, $55,000 each at the end of the lease. This way, it's $165,000 for these 14, so probably another, the other four, um, probably about $205,000 off the, the leased buses rather than buy buses. If I remember correctly, we used to have, um, you were on board back then, we used to buy two or three a year.
Started to, and then we stopped.
And we, and we had, and then we had a aging, very aging fleet, and we looked at alternatives going out, and he came in front of you guys, looking to do that also, and he kind of told us to try to find an alternative, which we did, and we wanted leases. Um, and we've got a brand new fleet, we've got a great fleet now, and it's turned over every three years, it's 77 passenger buses, and it's a heckin' lot less on days time, mechanic.
Yep.
You know, three years is not enough time for us to change tires. We don't have to buy tires anymore. If we did five years, like England does, we would probably have to change tires. We don't have to do that. Basically, what we do is resoil the filters, and check the tires, and make sure everything's working, and a lot of this stuff is on line, too, so the place that we bring it to is in Norton, if one of the buses break down. So we have plenty of buses to run around this town, and traverse this town, three times, not, three times now. We used to traverse it four times, if you remember correctly, we had, uh, high school, gates, two elementaries, and then two elementarys, the hotmail there. So now we have gates for a high school, second, and all four elementarys at one time. So we have enough drivers, um, so we're looking to, as, we are looking at a $1 million outlay, so the only people that could really do that is for the spectrum. Unless we turn around and accept at town meeting the Municipal Relief Act, then the Board of, uh, School Community-
So when you say it's a million dollar outlay, what exactly are you referencing? Just so people understand.
It's $165,000 for three years, so that's, and then there's a $760,000 buyout, if we were gonna buy them out, in three years from now.
So we put out the outlay as if we are going to, and if not, we just pay the 160 for three years?
Wells Fargo doesn't care who it is.
Yep, just long we have it there.
They're putting out a million, wanting to buy 14 buses. We are leasing it for three years.
Gotcha.
At 165 years.
That's why, trying to do it so that people can understand.
Yes.
So, yeah, what, what did you say? So what's the $700,000? That's the buyout at the end, but we don't have to front those funds, do we?
No, we don't, no. We only have to front the $165,000 each year, three years.
Has ridership gone up or down?
It has stabilized. We're about 1,500 to 1,600, which, by the way, while I'm here, we still need more riders, because our ridership is low right now. People haven't sent in their applications for buses. So we gotta do our routes by the middle of August, and we've got to get these buses out there, and the first day of school is September 5th, I believe. It's Wednesday instead of Wednesday this year. Tuesday is the special lecture, so we decided to go Wednesday instead.
Well, that's good to know. Does the, does the fund play for itself, the revolving fund?
No.
It doesn't?
The busing process, between all the sports runs that we do, which is another good thing that we do, um, sports runs are pretty much 98% run by our bus drivers here, not the Potmans or the Ingles out of here, or, they very rarely do that. All of our field trips are done by our bus drivers, so we're probably running, between all of that, in the neighborhood of $650,000 to run these buses, hire drivers, and do all the sports runs that we're doing in the field.
But the, the fees are just for pickup and drop off?
Yes.
So do that-
Fees probably are around $230,000.
Right, and does that pay for that portion of the service?
Yeah, it will, yeah. I mean, it's, it's a matter of, you know, $230,000, you get to, you know, it could even be the driver's salaries, it could be from the leasing-
No, I know what it can, I know what it can pay for. I'm wondering, does, does the fee that we charge for kids getting picked up and dropped off of school cover the expense of the buses to drop off and pick up kids from school?
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't?
No.
So you're not including any of the sports stuff? That's all separate?
Yeah, it is, no, it does not. We're probably paying, don't forget, we have all elementaries under only two miles, all elementarys over two miles-
It's free, yep.
Free. So I'd say the buses probably in the neighborhood of three and a quarter, so one buses all around the town. Our biggest ridership is the missing. That's where, because it's the seventh and eighth graders that take the bus, that we make most of our revenues. Sixth graders is still the same two mile, two mile run.
Sixth graders, huh?
Yep. And this is essentially-
If you have that number, if you can zip it over to me, that'd be great. Thanks.
Okay.
Toni asked most of my questions. I have just one additional one. Ridership is stabilized and enrollment is going down. Has there been any thought or reevaluation of the routes to decrease the number of buses that you're leasing, Paul?
We did do that, um, with Jenkins. We did, uh, decrease the route last year with Jenkins. We found that the ridership in there, the run was a little bit long, so we decided to probably add another run to Jenkins, being looking to hire another rider to be there. So-
So you had it.
We still, we still gotta traverse with the 63, 9 square miles, I think, in this time. We gotta do it three times. So it doesn't matter how many kids, you know, we can cram as many kids as we want on there, but it's still better traverse-
Right.
The same square miles, three times. Six times, actually. In the morning and at 3:00 a.m., times 13 or 14.
And I would suspect the high school buses are the emptiest still.
Yes, in the afternoon, especially, because you don't get any ridership from juniors and seniors, we get it from freshmen and sophomores.
Right.
And then at the end of the sophomore year, when they get their license, and, so, yeah.
No, I think you covered it.
Any other questions? Well, this is part of your budget, right? The school budget?
For this year, it is, yes.
Why would it not be next year?
That's what the school community said.
Is that a trick question?
No.
Okay.
Motion?
Motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the Wells, did you want to do it?
No.
Wells Fargo, a lease agreement for 14 new 2019 ICE, I C C E school buses. Oh, I read the wrong line. For the amount of $1,256,960.31.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Curran, discussion? Any further discussion?
Do you have another question?
Nope. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Paul, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, can I move on to 7:40 discussion, vote on Whittle's Walk Toro reel master equipment lease agreement. Golf Director, Bob Sanderson. Bob, good evening. How are you?
How are you?
So we're replacing a Toro lawnmower, it sounds like.
Yeah, it's actually, it's a fairway unit. It's one of two that we use. Um, at this point, both of them are fairly old. As, as you, as you know, we've had to put off a lot of our scheduled replacements because of budget constraints in recent years, so we have two aging pieces of equipment. We're looking to replace one. It's a, it's a Toro unit, um, $56,440. It's, um, it's part of our budget, uh, in the lease section of our budget, although it's actually a financing situation where it's a five-year finance with a one-year buyout at the end of five years. So the unit that we are replacing is a 2005 Jacobson, so we've got 14 years into that piece of equipment, and it's, um, it's, it's becoming increasingly, increasingly expensive to repair, and actually difficult to repair because of metal fatigue and the like, so.
It's just one that has like wings? In other words, you got the deck probably underneath, and then has some wings that drop down?
Very similar to the one that the Highway Department has?
It's a decent sized piece. It's probably different than what they would use for mowing fields and things like that. I would think the quality would be significant.
Obviously, because it's a fairway. Yeah, I get that, but I'm saying it's probably similar, I would think.
And, so, so basically, we're at a point right now where both of these units are nearing their end, and we've had times where we actually need both of the units to do the fairways in reasonable amount of time.
Are you keeping the Jake, the Jacobson?
No, the Jacobson's going. Actually, um, I G M favors Toro equipment over Jacobson. We've got, we've had our share of problems with Jacobson facilities, so they, they definitely have preferred the Toro equipment. Um, other than that, I mean, you know, I G M has done a really nice job of maintaining our equipment, and the fact that, as I say, 14 years is well beyond the normal useful life of one of these pieces of equipment, and, as I say, they're, they're saying that, in transporting it, sometimes the reels will, you know, move and adjust them a little bit, which is, so, which is not a moving thing, so. Obviously, the, the quality of the fairways is an important part of the overall golf experience for those people who choose to aim for the fairways.
Yeah, John, that's the short grass, you're-
I like the lot tall grass. I like the challenge.
Your forte is the knee-highs.
I'm always practicing my, my trick shots.
Some people go for the challenging, challenging.
Well, good. Questions from the board?
I just, how are the conditions this year?
Excellent. In fact, I think they might be as good as they've ever been, frankly. I mean, it's, part of it, truthfully, is the horrible drought two years ago and, and the seeding, I think the quality of the seed that was put down was superior to the seed that was originally used to, to seed the golf course. I think the quality of the turf is exceptional. We've had a pretty good, pretty good growing weather this year as well, so. We've had timely rains, and, uh, so it's, it's been, it's been a weird year.
And attendance, is it?
Uh, it was terrible in the spring because the weather was so bad, but our, our play is decent, um, you know, now, since, since the weather's changed, and, I guess, I'd say somewhere around mid-May before it returned to good with golfing weather.
Great.
Nationwide, everybody's rounds were down this year. I mean, normally, I always feel that Situate has kind of lousy weather in the spring. Um, this year, it was pretty much the whole, the whole country that was experiencing problems, so.
More?
Uh, just one question, Bob. Did, I know it's a lease, but did this go out to bid?
It's a state contract.
So you just went off the state contract, where we put it out?
Yep.
Okay, just wanted to understand that. That was all.
Good. Any other questions? Motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the TCF lease agreement for a new Toro reel master for the Whittle's Walk in the amount of $64,308.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bob, thank you. Good. Excellent. All right. Thank you, Bob. Can I move on to a discussion vote of the Situate Recreation Fee Schedule for Recreational Space Fields and Veterans Memorial Gym? Jennifer?
I can dance one more.
That's okay.
I'm a dancer anyway.
Not a problem. Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Good. So, um, changing the fee schedule here.
Yes.
And, just, can you briefly explain, why is it that we're changing?
Well, it's something we've been talking about for quite some time, um, for, I remember it's back to March of 2017, when we were evaluating the fees and the classes itself, and then we had a change in the field coordinator, so things kind of fell to the lease side and now it's very invested. The rates have been the same since 2009, um, and the fees basically pay salaries to the field coordinator. In fact, if you don't mind, the field coordinator is $30 an hour, and that's the whole time that's increased, and that's present at 20 dollars an hour. So the Recreation Commission has discussed it several times, and last meeting took a vote, um, to increase fees, um, for the class three on the community fields and the grass fields, bringing those whole $75 a player to $10 a player. Um, and then the other change is the gym, it was $50 an hour for Saturdays and Sundays, and it was free during the week, um, but we're looking to make that $15 an hour during the week, and then also adding, opening it up to the other classes for five and six, um, class four, $800, $75 a player, class five, $75 a player, and class six, $100 a player, based on availability. The permitting allows to have a class three, and that taking obviously the schools to press them, leaving that school.
Why do we do per person, player for class three, but with the class four, five, and six, it's based on an hour? So for example, I guess if I'm looking at it, turf field, then are we charging some of these youth organizations, if they're gonna play on the community's turf field or the grass field, $10 per player? So they have to pay per kid?
Class three, but the other classes aren't required to submit their enrollment to us, and those are generally, you know, one-offs for a clinic or something like that.
The reason why I'm asking is because I'm looking at it like with football, or basketball, or some of these other lacrosse or soccer, you're paying $10 per child, so you could get 30 kids out there, that's $300, and yet, class four per hour, they're paying, I guess, I guess, yeah.
Class four is for core profit and an outside nonprofit, and that's generally-
John, it's like youth football, they're paying $10 a kid for two hours a night, five nights a week, for-
Whatever long they need it.
It's for the whole season.
However many weeks they rent the fields for.
Okay.
Whereas this organization is, however many hours you use it, it's the same with youth soccer, they're just paying a fee per child for whatever use of the fields that they-
For the length of duration, so it's not on a continuum. Okay, okay. All right, I see what you're saying.
And the per hour is, is out of town entities?
You're charging more per hour than you would passing it on to per person or per child.
And the class three takes priority over any of the other classes for parking?
For use of the fields.
Okay.
Questions from the board? Well, Jennifer, just, I was at the meeting, whatever it was, and all, they, they spoke with all the youth groups, and all of them-
Two weeks ago, the, the majority of the field subcommittee were at a meeting, probably three, four months ago, and they were all on board. They all felt that it was completely reasonable, like, most of them weren't going to be, weren't going to be capacity for players, that they would be able to absorb an increase in their cost of goods.
And frankly, that's the majority of the fees are from the, the per-player fees. The other ones are, are minimal, the hourly rentals of this stuff.
What about with Situate coaches? I see the class five, Situate public coach, teacher.
So that's if, uh, the high school lacrosse coach wants to hold, hold a private clinic and charge the people to come to his clinic, then he would have to rent the field.
So it wouldn't be, if, if that high school coach hasn't set up a nonprofit organization for non-profit, if it's core profit and that's what it is, probably not a nonprofit.
I got you.
So there's two classes.
Yeah, there's five classes, but that's-
No, I mean for the coaches.
Yeah.
Yep.
But the majority of the money comes, you know, you have 3,000 kids in the soccer program over the course of the year, they pay $10 each, and that's really what fronts the money to pay the, the fees. I mean, the coordinator and whatever little repair stuff can go into it as well.
Your coordinator's a full-time position, correct?
Yes.
Oh, it's only part-time? So will this increase allow us to take a look at a full-time?
Possibly. That's beyond us, because that involves benefits and other things.
I just didn't know, you know-
I think the hours have gone up a little bit, from like a 12 to a-
Yeah, the field coordinator, I believe, is $19, $5.
I think more of that is benefited.
That's-
How do these rates compare to what other towns charge? We know, have you looked at sort of comparable?
They are very comparable, yeah. Um, and when she was there, she did a lot of research, and this is what a whole community can begin, and they are comparable to, and a lot of their towns. And as far as the other classes, um, we are much cheaper than going to the U or someplace like that.
Okay. And that was my other question, was roughly, I don't know if you noticed, the percentage in each of these classes of the users of these fields? I mean, do we kind of know, is it, most of them are in class one and two anyway, or?
Yeah, most are class one, two, and three.
Okay.
I guess I'm going back to class five, because I'm looking at like, if a coach wanted to put on something, they have a nonprofit to do it, but I just look at like the field, the turf is 100, grass fields are 75. Um, it just seems a little expensive for a coach to be putting something on.
We haven't changed that. I don't think we've changed that.
No.
And that is given, we're giving them a break from, from four, because they are working for the town. And if they were to go somewhere else to a fireman, then they would be able to, at least $10 an hour.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I, I guess the reason why I'm saying it is because of, typically, a coach is gonna be doing it, not for him or herself, presumably, they're doing it for their program, try to increase their program.
Well, if they're nonprofit, then they get it for the two or three.
If they do, if it's part of like the high school baseball team, and it's under the high school baseball, then it wouldn't be under the class five.
It would go into class one or two, or?
But if a coach wants to run something in the summer and hire some people and make some money off of it, then that would fall under a class five.
Okay.
Because it's four buckets.
That's fair.
Yeah. But if it's going to the boosters, if it was, if it was, um, you know, clank for kids, then it wouldn't be.
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's my concern. I just want to make sure that coaches who want to do something aren't going to be prohibited from running an event, because now they're gonna have to pay an hourly rate, which defeats the whole purpose of trying to encourage youth sports outside of the rec department, you know, and a, um, and a partnership is really the key. You take baseball, you can take lacrosse or soccer, just, just want to make sure that they have that opportunity. All right.
Other questions from the board?
I don't know. No.
Motion then?
Move that the Board of Selectmen accept the fee changes as described for the town of Situate Fields, Veterans Memorial Gym, and recreational building space proposed and voted by the Recreation Commission. voted by the Recreation Commission.
Motion by Ms. Kirwin, seconded by...
Second.
Mr. Vignani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jen, thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
Appreciate it. All right, moving on to the Citewitt Recreation Commission Field Plan. Dan?
Yes. Good evening. First of all, thank, I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen for giving us the opportunity to present this to you. Not enough overuse and maintenance plan. There's a three places that I'd like everybody to take away from the presentation. Few years ago, started the rec subcommittee for field use. And their charter was to put together a comprehensive plan. It included town-owned fields, included other town-owned parcels that could be used. And the plan was based, the plan that we came up with is based on the work of the subcommittee. And I'd like to recognize several people on the subcommittee, because they did put a lot of work into this. Gary Meyerson was the first chairperson of the subcommittee. Jackie Carr-Cumberford followed up with him as a subcommittee chairperson. Bill Luet put a lot of time in from the high school, Ward Blasing from the rec department. Sean O'Connor came to almost every meeting with the subcommittee. And all the other members of the subcommittee, and about 20 youth organizations that were involved, as well as the high school sports organizations. And then the rec department commissioned a study from a Traverse Landscape architect that looked at all the fields and put together what I think is a very nice report on the condition of the fields and the state of the fields in Citewitt. Purpose of the plan was to develop a strategy for investment that the town makes. A town, every time we spend money on a field, it's an investment. And we wanted to make, we wanted to put the plan together to make sure that that investment is being used wisely and most efficiently. Provide the greatest improvements to the athletic programs that we could with the budgets that we have. It was also, the purpose was to access the current athletic fields and what the projected recreational needs for the town would be over the next several years. Another purpose of the plan was to guide future decisions and capital improvement that we're looking for to get the fields to where we think they should be for the town. What was included in the, in the plan was the inventory of all the properties in town, a survey of all the users of the fields. We surveyed all the youth groups. The one that we omitted, which we didn't think of until somebody pointed out later, was the elementary school children that use the school for recess and things like that. That was not included. We took an inventory of the existing conditions of the field, and that was done with a Traverse Landscape, and developed some concepts and recommendations for improvements. And also prioritized. The scope of the study, do you have the presentation, by the way?
Yeah.
I do have more. The, the scope of the study includes 19 fields in, I think, 13 locations in town. What the scope did include was some of the fields that, or some of the locations that could be used for fields but aren't currently being used for fields. And when we did the survey, the inventory of town-owned property, there were very few properties that could be used for fields, number one. And if you were going to put more than one field on a property, there were really three locations. And that was Clap Road property, that was the Land Swab, the high school pushing area, which is behind the high school, which is problematic from the geography perspective, and the lot behind the library. Key findings of the study were, I think they listed about nine or 10 in the study. The first one was that Citewitt has considerably less fields than not only most towns around us, but most towns in the country. That was one of their conclusions. The athletic fields are intensely overused. The town's in need of additional fields to support town and high school usage, as well as to allow for the maintenance and rest of some of the fields that we do have. We do have Title IX and track turf issues at the high school that need immediate action. And one of the other findings was synthetic turf is recommended where possible to reduce irrigation maintenance costs and provide more configuration flexibility of how you use the fields. Big example, one of the proposals we, we worked on putting forth is back fields at the high school, where today you have three fields, I'll call them three fields. You have the JV baseball field, you have a football field, and you have varsity baseball field. If you configure that with turf, you could end up with two baseball fields and three multi-use fields in between. So it's a better use of the property and the configurate, and being able to configure those with turf.
And Dan, is that something that you'll be sharing with the company that we just hired to design that back athletic complex?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Most fields are on the school sites. One of the other findings was that most, most of the fields are on school sites, not protected by Parks and Recreation Property Status. Should be, their, their comment was, should be carefully administered in the future, as most changes in school properties can lead to loss of fields within the town. That was a generic statement. I think we're, we may be seeing that coming up with some of the changes in, potential changes in schools. We're already seeing that with the Gate School. What's going to happen with that configuration? That'll wind up, the senior center going there and other things.
Sorry?
Pardon?
Sorry, the gates and all that?
Yes. So I think the one thing that came out of this most strongly was that a maintenance plan is needed for the county. That includes not just maintaining the fields in an operating condition, but also a plan that has budget involved in it for replacement of fields. Fields don't have an infinite life. We, we probably stretch the use of fields more than we should. Things need replacing, whether it be grass, turf, turf, grass, fences, back, backstop, things like that. They all need replacing over time, and we should be budgeting that. I think one of the, the few things we do budget for is the turf, where the rec department has, has collected about $450,000 over the past 10 years, because we know that needs to be replaced every 10 years. Naturally, towns of the period within the size of Citewitt employ a full-time field supervisor that maintains grounds. That's something that, that we don't have. I think DPW does a great job in what they can do. I think they're limited as far as its staff and budget for what they can do. But other towns in the country, with the recommendation of the study, hire a full-time person, that's a possibility for fields. The other thing was, there were three additional parcels, as I mentioned, that could be used for potential expansion of fields. Personally, I think we should look at the fields we have, get them in the best shape we can. Retake the survey to see the use of the fields again, because it'll be three years this coming year since we took the survey. And then determine whether we actually need to look at building new properties, new fields on properties. You mentioned before, it came to population, things like that. I'm recommending, I recommended to the Recreation Commission that they do a, the inventory and survey of the fields about every two or three years, so we can make sure the population hasn't changed, the demographic hasn't changed or have changed. We saw a big change since the survey was done. For example, with flag football, didn't exist four years ago. And now there's, I don't know, 600, there were 500 last year, I know. So there's 600, about 600 kids involved with flag football. It didn't exist. Some of the key recommendations specifically were to remove and replace existing track and synthetic turf at the high school. Create multi-use synthetic turf complex at the high school, which includes varsity baseball, varsity softball, and multi-use overlays in between. Implement a maintenance plan and propose improvements to the natural turf fields. Some of those are in pretty bad shape. One in particular is really not being used because of the shape it's in, and that's Flannery Field. And what I'm told is you're just not using it anymore because of condition. But I need to work. Given the Title IX issue and varsity softball coming up to the high school, we need to find a location for JV baseball. That's, that's something that's up in the air now. Could go Central Field, and it could go Gates where it was, or where there was a varsity baseball field years ago. Again, that's all going to shake out in the next year or two, I hope, and be able to determine where that should be located. And then just natural, you know, maintenance of the fields, improved drainage, drainage, and take some of the existing fields that aren't used for, or aren't configured in a standard size for games and make those the fields that could have games on. Such as some of the elementary schools. The plan has phasing recommendations that go from immediate needs to short-term to long-term. Immediate needs, as I said, were the track and field at the high school, Title IX issues for the turf configuration behind the high school, and a maintenance program. Those are the three top priorities that we thought should be implemented in the next two years or so. Short-term improvements included improvements to Central Field, which was ongoing and then halted when a lot of moving parts started moving a little faster than we thought they To evaluate the potential redesign of Gates, depending on what happens with the senior center there, implement improvements at Flannery Field, look at Jenkins and Halliday School in the back to see if they could be approved to conduct more, larger field size and have more games there. And then long-term, including things like Wompa Tuck, and evaluating town-owned properties, and perhaps even investigating purchasing properties for use for recreation. The last part of the plan was really a matrix that the subcommittee put together to prioritize each of the fields and what we think needs to be done. Attach some kind of estimated cost to what that might be for budgetary purposes, and look at maintenance costs for each of the fields. So if I go back to the beginning of my presentation, not enough, overuse, and maintenance plan. Those are the three things we wanted to get across out of the plan that we have, and thank you for allowing us to do this.
Thank you. So you're looking for a vote tonight on this?
For just a presentation in general?
We have asked Brad, we've talked with Brad, to put this in the town plan.
Yes.
And since that had already, was just being submitted, he was looking at putting this in as an amendment.
Yeah, just sort of an action. This is fabulous, and I can't thank you all enough, Dan and your whole team, for doing this. What I'd like to say, I don't know, Jim, if it's you sitting down with Maura and some of these guys, but who owns the action steps? Like, that's what, in my mind, is missing on this. So we've seen, our town seems to inherently come forward with recommendations, but never steps to actually enact on those recommendations. And since fields are such a top priority for all of us, I think we need to take some of their recommendations and identify whose responsibility it is to ensure that that takes place. So I don't know if that's you sitting down with Maura, or...
Yeah, I mean, the, the first ones, we've already taken the steps on the high school complex. So beyond that, it'd probably be somewhere between Mara, Kevin, and I. As to what comes next. And then, once we decide what comes next, we have to sit down with Nancy and find out where the money's going to come from.
Right. Especially the maintenance plan? You know, we've been hearing that for years, but I don't think we have.
Well, again, the issue we talked about a little bit last time, the issue is, the fields are overused. So we can never rest them. When do we use the fields? In the spring and the fall? When do you grow grass? The spring and the fall? Then the fields don't have any water. So you need to get that extra capacity to take people off a field. We, we can't bring a field back right now, because we can't close any. So doing the high school complex, and then we'll have the discussion about Toll Brothers, maybe that gives us that extra field, where we can then start saying, set the fields as closed. But close it, overseed it, do all the work. But we also have to put wells and water on these fields, because otherwise, you're just chasing your own tail. Unless you have a wet fall or winter, but...
Yeah, I think that's, that's the critical component. And I know, Dan, you're talking about, let's just focus on the fields we have. One of the issues I have is, you know, we may not have enough to do exactly what you're talking about, Jim, to be able to kind of like put them in a state of dormancy for a year. Meanwhile...
The high school project should give you some of that, because of the ability just to roll teams. Just keep rolling teams on and off, they're busy all the time. You might get that ability to close a field. And then, again, you close that field for one or two growing seasons. You bring it back, it's good for a couple of years, you can run another field and do the same thing.
I also think, though, when we look at the high school complex, you know, with the water resources concern in town, you know, we really have to take a long, hard financial look at the benefits of them being turf and not grass. And make sure that that's factored in when we do the analysis that comes back, right?
One of the things they were looking at in the design in the back of turf fields is water collection that could be used, elsewhere it could be used up in...
Cushion. Oh, I recall that, yeah.
So, and, and obviously, you don't need to irrigate part of it. So that saves water right there as far as the town. I do think over long-term, turf is less expensive to maintain than natural turf, artificial turf. Natural turf, over a long-term time, is very costly, and you have to plan for replacement of that. So otherwise, you know, you're going to 10 years' use, and you don't have money to replace the field, then you're in a similar situation as if you did do it. I think that's where the maintenance plan is extremely important, for the town to develop the maintenance plan, be able to have money set aside for field replacement, not just new fields, but also how do you take care of the field, the life of the field? And replace things that need to be replaced over time.
Turf would also give us another field in between the two. It's a good amount of focus. It gives a chance to rest.
Yeah, just, I've been quite involved with this for a number of years, and Dan mentioned a lot of people who did a great job. Dan didn't mention himself.
Oh, yeah.
Who put a ton of time into this. Jackie as well, put a ton of time in it, Maura, Nick, the rest of the rec commission. But the group there really did a lot of work, a lot of hands-on work. You went to every field, you looked at every single one of them. So I thank you for the energy you put in there. And then we really found an unexpected professional to come in and do it, because a lot of people quoted, quotes much higher than what we were able to get somebody in at. As we'll talk about shortly, as I see Bill in the back there, you know, we, we are taking small steps in this area. Even that Jim did last year's budget, we added a person, a DPW person as well, to try and move in that direction. So slowly we are. We have, we have many, many most important issues in town. Fields, roads, groundwater. So the, the goal of us is to keep them all moving in the right direction and putting resources into all of them, as, as I think we do the best we can. But the group did a great job. Hopefully, we can get some, some new fields and develop some of the ones we've thought about, maybe Clap, maybe, you know, the one we're going to talk about shortly, Wompa Tuck, and get these other ones and, and do what kind of Jim said, where we can shut down a field and let it get back to, to good playing condition.
The most difficult part of the plan is how do you recommend it? And, you know, some of the recommendations, Wompa Tuck, was, wasn't a high priority, but it can be a high priority, given the current circumstances, and it should be, given current circumstances, as I'm told. And it's, there's a lot of moving targets, as everybody knows, with properties, with schools, with what's happened with the senior center, and a lot of that was, it's been up in the air. So I think things are starting to settle, and, but I think the maintenance plan is real important to have replaced moving forward.
Right. And you hit the nail on the head. When you go to these other towns like Silver Lake, Plymouth, even Marshfield, they have something we don't, and it's called land. And we just do not have open space. I think Dan did research, and there's three pieces of land that are more than five acres or two acres or something like that in, in town that we can use. So, so we really have to be intelligent and use our pieces of land the best that we can. So I thank you for all the work you did on it, and we'll take some steps on it.
Karen?
I think everybody's touched on most everything. I think Mara's point about figuring out the spider web of oversight and action items is, is, is going to be really critical. And, you know, as Tony said, thank you for naming everyone that worked so hard on this. Putting all of this information in a comprehensive manner so that we can layer it on with all the other decisions is, is critical. So thank you for doing that. And the other thing that you mentioned was to do, to update the survey. And I don't know how that process would get started again, but I think you're dead right. It changes every four or five years. Could be a whole new thing, we don't know. Is that something the rec department... Is that something the rec department has on their horizon to initiate, or...
I'd say the rec commission.
I mean, I meant the rec commission. Excuse me, yeah.
The field subcommittee that kind of spearheaded that, and I want to touch on, Tony said that this study was a really good price, and the study was really good price because of all of the hard work that Dan and the field subcommittee did. They handed down so much data and work, so much ground out of work with. And the field subcommittee is the one that did the survey before, and I'm hoping that we can light on them to do it again, and we need to rejuvenate that field subcommittee again, as the rec commission is looking to do. Not the department.
We have the survey. We might change a couple of questions based on our experience with what people fed back this forward, but I think it's not that much work to do it again. Change, you know, the people that are involved in the different youth organizations, making sure you're hitting them all, and gather the information again, and then evaluate, what has changed or what hasn't changed. And what has changed, what we need for the field.
Right, it might impact the priorities. Yeah, great.
Well, one thing I was going to say, you know what's happening, is obviously with the high school, we're looking at that. That's a high priority that we're looking at as a town to try to remedy. As a result of that, that puts us into gates, old gates, you know, which is going to be dealt with, there's going to be some field access there, which I think is something that maybe is a medium at this point, but it could be, it's going to be, I'd say, front and center, which I think is important for us to look at. And then the issue of the JV baseball field, which could be a part of that solution, or may end up being a part of the central field. So certainly, and of course, later on, we're talking about Wamputuck. So I just can say right now, our focus right now is certainly high school, gates, Wamputuck. That's not to say that those are our priorities, it just so happens that's what's coming now. High school is a priority. But I'm just saying, I think it certainly helps for the rec commission to understand that we are implementing these, maybe not in this exact order, but we're going to try to go after this and attack it with the idea that we need to focus on maintenance. Because the bottom line is, once it's built, we've got to figure out how we're going to maintain it ongoing. And I use that as an example, I use it as the basketball courts. Trying to replace the light right now, trying to fix the lights, you know. Somebody was supposed to maintain it, it's not, it's going to fall into the town's lap. So we've got to maintain that going forward, and we need to figure out how we're going to pay for it. And one of the things that I'm always looking at is, and this is not a shot at the DPW, because they work really hard, but focusing more on like, parks, department focused on the fields and the facilities, as opposed to a DPW who's more focused on just making sure roads and things are done, and the schools, or the fields. But I'd rather focus more specifically hand-in-hand with the rec department, the parks department maintaining it. So that's one of the things I'm looking at, to assure that the maintenance is maintained with some form of ownership.
Maura has indicated that the relationship with the DPW has just gotten stronger and better.
Oh, it has. And I don't mean to, and...
Did you see that, correct?
Correct. And the way I'd like to see it grows is specifically creating a department for the parks that can be used in the DPW during the offseason, but during the need of the spring, summer, and fall, the 100% or 90% of their job is just focused on the fields and ensuring that they're either dealt with, watered, or they're not used, and, you know, things of that nature. So what, I'm glad to hear that this is going to be a part of our plan, the planning boards, what do you call it, the master plan, I assume? That's what Brad was saying, that it's going to be incorporated as an appendix? Good, it should be. And then maybe what we should do is circle back, you know, once we get the design for the high school, if that works for you folks, because I think it's important that we keep this in the forefront. I don't want the people in the rec commission or anybody else thinking that, out of sight out of mind, that no, this is a priority for the board. If that makes sense?
Agreed.
Is this on the town website? Have we uploaded this?
I believe it has.
Okay.
I haven't had it in my...
Okay, sure, okay.
Good, that'd be great. Good, Dan?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
It's great work, thank you.
It's crazy, crazy great work.
All right, Sean McCarthy, town engineer, you're up.
Come on down.
We're going to discuss a vote, pressure-reducing valve. This is exciting stuff, Sean. It's a contract of $99,000.
This is exciting.
Pressure-reducing valve. It's either with sewer or it's got to be with water, but I suspect it's water pressure. We don't have sewer pressure, we really don't want to pressurize our sewer in case something explodes, right?
Correct. I had no idea.
Not in the sewer, no. So this appears to be something that was passed in the 2009 annual town meeting?
Yes, capital improvement project, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, why's it taking so long? I'm putting you on the spot, Kevin's not here, he's on vacation, he's giving you the hard task.
I didn't even work here then.
Nine years ago, why is that?
Because we didn't have you.
What's happened? Why is it taking so long?
Not enough pressure.
Too much pressure, right?
Too much pressure.
In Homaroc, yeah.
I'm going to guess another project rose higher on the priority list than this.
Yeah, there were several reports done that mentioned this improvement in the Homaroc area, and it's just due to elevation under the tanks there in Marshfield and the low point of Homaroc.
Can you just briefly explain to the audience and TV what exactly we're talking about? What's, why are you here before us? How about that?
Several audits for the whole distribution system have identified the high pressure in Homaroc. We get our water from the Marshfield distribution system. Typical pressures around town are between 40 and 60 PSI at your house. Homaroc is 100 plus. And due to the porous soils in Homaroc, it's very difficult to find a leak because it doesn't surface.
So let me ask you this, because of the higher pressure, that signifies that there are leaks, and that's the reason why the pressure keeps increasing, and that's why it's so high in Homaroc?
No, it's based on elevation, pressure in the system.
If I may ask, that the issue seems to be, the high pressure, we believe, is causing a lot of the leaks. Because the pressure is so high in the system, it's causing the joints and things to pop. So by reducing the pressure, we feel that we'll be able to reduce the number and the severity of leaks in the Homaroc area.
And that's why you're here before us, because we passed this nine years ago to replace the valve, and this is going to reduce the pressure, this proposed...
To help reduce the leaks.
In Homaroc.
In Homaroc.
And of course, we pay commercial rate to Marshfield, they changed it on us, we used to get the residential rate, now they're charging us three times the rate.
Paying out of town rates.
Yeah. It's a neighborly thing to do, you know. So, in any event, so right now, it's looking at, this is, the bids that are out there, there was one for $156,500 to replace the valve, and the one that came in was $99,000?
Correct.
Questions from the board?
You said, oh, go ahead. No, go ahead.
The impact on pressure for the residents, do you anticipate any change?
Yeah, at the households, not anything I don't think that they're going to be uncomfortable with. The other important issue is the fire protection, to maintain those type of flows. So the valve that we've proposed can be adjusted, finding, going with the larger eight-inch or six-inch valve and an eight-inch housing, due to all the mechanical fittings. The six-inch valve allows you to adjust things minutely. So as they go through the testing, if we do have impacts, they're easy to adjust in or out. But the hope is to reduce the leaks and the unaccounted-for water losses that we're getting in Homaroc. They do annual leak detection down there, and they're having problems, they've even brought in newer technology to try to locate those. They designed two this past year that were significant.
Did you tell me it was a million gallons a year of unaccounted water? Is that, am I remembering correctly? Something like that down there? It's a lot.
Homaroc, I believe, is in the $200,000.
$200,000.
Yeah, annually. I'm not sure what the number is for the town.
Yep.
Homaroc is the lion's share of unaccounted-for water.
Yeah.
Tony?
So Sean, are we, we're replacing valves that are already there, or we're adding new valves?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a tank, country tank that will reach in Marshfield Avenue that'll spur off of the main line that comes in through this pressure-reducing valve. You bypass it if you need to.
Is it just one?
Yes.
And is it near the beginning of the...
Just as, it's proposed just after you go over the bridge at the Ridgeway on the large 10-inch main. They do have ways of looking at how to do the one on Julian Street as well, the right half of Homaroc.
So this one will only do half of Homaroc?
Correct, yeah. I believe it was $140,000 at the 2009 annual town meeting that was allocated, and the prices are...
To do one of them?
Right, the 99.
When would, Sean, is the proposed construction occur?
I think it's something Kevin wants to get on sooner rather than later.
But my thought is, would it, can we assure that it will not happen until after the summer, like, in September on, only because of the businesses and the residents that are summering there?
Yeah, yeah.
So what would the plan be for the other half of Homaroc?
Similarly.
Is there another article from 2010 sitting out there?
No, not that I'm aware of.
I have to go back to additional funds to do the element.
We'll have 40 left over, I think, from this one.
So is it our hope to see if this works, and if it does, then go back and try to replace the one on Julian Street?
It should be less, the fittings are all smaller, the main is smaller. This is a 10-inch, that's a six-inch main going over Julian, so hopefully it comes...
Do they meet?
No, that's small.
On, I guess it's Julian Street.
On Central, or...
Or Central, right.
It must meet at Central.
So it wouldn't have an impact on that?
I think going off the 10 is going to have an impact to us, the Air Force base, and then they have valves in between that, that I know we were discussing about turning certain ones off and on to be able to push the water or manipulate the water the way you want to it right now. That's Sean.
That's, those other valves are existing right now, though, right? They're not going in with this?
Correct, yeah, yeah. They'd be gate valves, yeah. These are all new, all the appearances in the bank.
Any other questions?
I have to answer.
Motion then?
We'd like the Board of Selectmen award the contract to supply and install a pressure-reducing valve and all piping on Marshfield Avenue in Homaroc to C. Naughton for $99,000.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was easy. Now, let's get to the hard one, Sean, here. Transfer station fees, we're increasing them, is that what's going on?
Well, due to the recycling market, yeah, what we used to get paid for, we're now paying for it to dispose of. I didn't want to touch the stickers, I didn't want to touch the bag prices. So to try to recoup some of the costs, we're increasing a lot of the specialty items that we dispose of, your electronics, tires, appliances, and more importantly, the C and D or the construction and demolition degree. It's only a four-cent increase per pound, but it's an $80 increase in time. So I think the small...
Is that going to price us out of the market?
No, in fact, I'm getting more and more phone calls from commercial people who want to dump here because it was so low. I've also reached out to a lot of the colleagues in social recycling who are bound to do the same thing with all of their voids of selectmen. It's costing us more to, say, get rid of the televisions than we're making.
Got you.
Yeah, I had a client who told me that our C and D is really low, and consequently, people are coming from out of town just to dump it here because it's cheaper to put it here than it is to take it to their surrounding towns or to where cities, in fact, are going to. So I'm glad to see that that is going up because it needs to go up. At least we get paid a fair rate, as opposed to us taking a loss on it. With respect to the others, I guess, I didn't, I see we're going up, but it seems like we're comparable to the surrounding towns.
And like I say, I think a lot of the data that I have is current, and they're in the middle of doing the same thing, too. I don't know, they didn't get into specifics as to how far they were going to increase some of their prices, but...
So we're taking on boats, $200 a minimum? Is this where we park it for the winter, or...
It's been on the rise, according to the guys down there, and they do take some time because we have to smash them up in order to get them into the trailer. And even the fiberglass, although it doesn't weigh a lot, was taking us significant time to get it into the container, so we thought we would add a minimum to some of these boats.
That makes sense. What about our recycling? You know, I heard that, obviously, glass is a major issue now because some of the plants on the north shore is no longer in operation, and of course, I think ours goes to Brockton, if I'm not mistaken, Kearney or something, but he's still taking it, crushing it. But are we losing, beginning to lose money on our recyclables, Sean?
I just had an opportunity, and I've used it once, Pace Glass in New Jersey has taken it from us for nothing. We have to supply them over 20 tons, and the bin that we're using down at the transfer station easily does that. They've hauled one load for us out of Situate. It's a three-month trial, so I don't know how long they're going to continue to do it, but I'm going to try to get rid of as much as I can for nothing. Yeah, Kearney is taking it for ease.
That's what I've heard.
Yeah, I eliminated hauling by having us do it. So we'll send the highway department and their largest 10-wheeler, and that'll take 13, 14 tons, overpaying $80 a ton, where we used to not pay any. So the recyclables, I'm trying to balance that with some of the specialty item prices to make up some of the differences without worrying, paying to get rid of plastic. We used to pay nothing. And then paper fluctuates, and it's on the market. Sometimes we get a rebate enough to cover the haul, so it's a zero.
Real soon.
Hopefully not making any.
Is there anything out there, any options, or something that we could be taking a look at? You know, I know that Maura and I met with Situate, Sustainable Situate, just trying to come up with ideas, what other communities in the Commonwealth or even around the area, what are they doing with the recyclables that we can do?
Right, yeah. Social recycling cooperative is a huge help.
They mentioned that, yeah.
Yeah, they, she spends a lot of time investigating for all of the municipalities involved in the group.
Are you going a part of that, or is it Kevin? Okay.
No, yeah.
Yeah, if you could, that would be helpful, see if there's something that we can do, because clearly, our recyclables are, it's not like it was 10 years ago. So it'd be interesting to see if we could do something with them.
And the stations coming up on 20 is old as well, some things are starting to show their age down there as well, and anticipate having some maintenance issues, idle doors or compactors or something.
Maybe we should have the Free Shack open on the 20th anniversary.
Which one?
The Free Shack, get the Free Shack open again?
Fill it up.
Just for the weekend, Tony?
Take it early.
Was that the Take It or Leave It?
The Take It or Leave It, yeah. Have some coffee and donuts. Jim, you ought to come down and see it, you know? More on. Questions from the board? Anybody on that?
I might just have a comment. Sean, thanks for trying to avoid raising sticker prices and bag prices, so appreciate that. I would be curious at some point, don't worry about it now, to see where we fall with regards to those prices as you balance that, because that's not on here because you didn't adjust them in comparison to the other towns.
Or where they adjust to?
Yeah, just to see the balance at some point, but thank you. I mean, I know it's tough, so thanks for trying to stay away from that.
Yeah, it doesn't affect the majority, I'm going to say, of the users of the transfer station. People aren't throwing out televisions every day, or even annually for that matter. Mattresses will stay the same, it's amazing how many mattresses, but we've had a grant through DDP for the last three years that they've been picking up that cost.
Yeah, just two quick questions. My fear is that, you mentioned probably four or five things that we lost grants or revenue from, and we're only increasing these minor things that don't get a lot of activity. Is this going to balance the budget?
I'm hoping it gets me to income. Right now, I'm on the downside. I'm not even covering costs to dispose of.
Right.
So I'd like to get some money in the bank. I don't know what's going to happen with the market as well, if these keep going up. I don't want to have to come back... I don't want to have to come back.
Well, I guess it just, give this a shot and see what it does, but I don't think, you know, I think we should just be cognizant of the fact that at some point in time, our rates are going to have to go up if everything that we used to get for free is now costing us something?
And we're approaching, I think, the, the ten-year contract on, at C. Mass. too. So I'm sure they're going to have an opportunity to adjust their trash rates or municipal waste rates. They'll do that as well.
My other question is more logistical. So the bins that we have that are holding up the spots that people can pull into, there's glass, and then there's, there's two, right?
Yeah, they said they've, they try to use one on the weekends.
I don't think they do.
Okay.
So I just hear a lot of people...
I have two, even being there.
Yeah, I don't know if anyone's thought of another place that we can put the glass so that it's not taking up the two spots, because you get elderly people that, that want to get in, just lazy people like myself, that wait for that spot there, and, and there's two to three of them, I think, sometimes are, are closed up with the other stuff, and it seems like there'd be another place to put the glass.
It's, it's a little complicated only because the full dumpsters of glass, I can't move with the equipment I have down there. So we did, a month or so ago, take those small bins and put them down where the glass chute was, and I said, give it a shot, I'm trying to free these spots up. And most of, I tried it. Most of them went into the bin, everything I did. But as it started to fill up, then they started smashing, and then we had a mess beneath. I mean, it was safe for the public, but all the glass was popping out of the bin because it was small and you were dropping it from fifteen feet. So I've kicked around the idea to, to make some type of chute that we can use the small dumpster that's easy to move it, open those two spots up. Talked about putting it over in the parking spots as you come up. They're afraid they'll be contaminated. That's the biggest, and in fact, that's one of the requirements of New Jersey taking it, is the percentage of contaminants in the...
I'm not going to tell you how to do it, I'm just saying, if you can look into the logistics of it and see if there's a way to, to free some of that stuff up.
Absolutely have, yeah. I don't like them, they're, they're taking those spots, they're difficult to walk by, especially when it's busy, with people trying to pass, get to their redemption.
Okay.
Yeah, we have been looking at an alternative for it.
Great.
Just, what if you were to put them over at the garbage side, where the trash bags are, only because then that, most of the people are using for recyclables, and then, you know, they're going to dump their bottles. You don't see a lot of people using the trash bins, or the bags, all full when it's all open. Sometimes half of them are closed. That's why I was curious if you just moved them across, but I don't know.
Actually, that's a good idea.
There's a, there's a window at the end, both where the styrofoam is, and they said that, that fills up ridiculously quick with all the bins and flower pots, but I had mentioned the same thing. They thought of contamination. If I do it, I'm open to try anything and see how, how that works.
Just a thought.
I think Sean's point is, you could probably give up a spot over there easier than over here.
Spotting the garbage where the bags are, towards the end.
I see what you're saying.
You can, and as far as opening, people can walk one bay over, two bays over, when you, you open up the garage door and you're dumping it down, they don't need to park the car there. You can park it at the remaining six spots.
Yep.
That's all.
I see.
Just a thought.
We'll think about it.
All right, well, good. That was a great talk. How about the motion on this? Anybody?
Motion to raise the fees at Situate Transfer Station on select items as itemized on the disposal fee comparison schedule.
Motion by Ms. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sean, thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Sean.
All right.
He's going to effect immediately?
After Sunday.
What's that?
After I throw my television on.
All right.
Delete.
Thank you again, Sean, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to what was an eight-thirty discussion vote, Toll Brothers mitigation agreement. With us, we have Bill Orinberger, attorney, and we also have our town council, Cindy Amara. Good evening, and I forgot this gentleman's name again. I know you're a Toll...
I'm Dave Bauer.
Dave Bauer, good to see you again.
Hi.
You should know that, you've been doing this for about four years, if I'm not mistaken. All right?
Good evening.
Here we go, let's get caught up here.
Yeah.
We had, we had tonight, just give out the border's facts. We have all the permits, the planning board's special permit, stormwater permit, become filed, and all the appeal periods has expired. Our conservation commission order conditions is permanent, and you've all been filed with the red tree of these, and that has become filed, also including a sixty-day appeal period. The Toll Brothers are imminently going to purchase the property, at which point they will commence construction after coordinating pre-construction meetings with the planning board and conservation commission. So that's the status of where we are. What we're here tonight for is, way back when, it seems, time seems to fly, after three and a half years ago, but the process, to step back for a second, one of the things we'd like to say is that this has been a very involved process with all the town boards, the town consulting engineers, the town officials, and it's been, it's been a real good experience for ourselves and the Toll Brothers. Everyone's been super to work with, and so from a municipal standpoint, it's very pleasing because in some other municipalities, we're not so fortunate, you know, we have that. So where we are now is, we have before you, and we've worked with Jim Bedrow and also with Cindy, they have an agreement, because way back when, the Toll Brothers were going to do some things for the town. And what we have in front of you is to build a ball field behind Wampatack. This has been, amongst other things, with Jim and D P W, it's been collaborative process, amongst other things, like her, the drill here tonight. One of the things that segued out of this is we're going to drill, drill a well, get the property irrigated so we get the maximum utility out of this. One of the things is an aside, we're also talking since when the field's going to be, all the construction could happen, the students and non-school. One of the things I've already talked with Jim D P W is to get ahead of the turn, maybe on Christmas break, they're going to start on the well stuff, so that when the field is implemented, it's not like you're building a well and there's a gap there for growth. So that's something we're already working towards. The second thing is, there's a grant to the town for two hundred thousand dollars. And Toll Brothers have decided initially, it was going to be spread out some, some time period, but just recently, in September, they're going to grant the entire two hundred thousand so the town can utilize that for whatever purposes the selectmen decide. One of the things that I, and I'll be quiet, is during the course of the process, and I know that Karen and I are liaisons to the various permitting boards, so, but some of the other people, particularly citizens, might not be aware, in addition to the things that are here, during the, during the collaborative process here, there's other things that the Toll Brothers have already embedded into the permits which we have, and one of those is, just to give you some, but not all, there's ponding problems at Sixth Avenue and Hadley that they've spent about a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and they've devised a drainage system to correct that on Hadley Road. We're going to repave part of Hadley Road and Sixth Avenue, they're going to put in new sidewalks on Hadley Road. These things aggregate to, to over three hundred thousand dollars. In addition to that, for safety purposes on, and this is good for knowledge for, for the citizens also, is there can be four digital speed signs, two on Tilden, two on Hadley Road, costs twenty, thirty thousand dollars. There's going to be pedestrian actuated crossing signal on Hadley Road, which is similar price. Also to help water, there's a dead end water at the end of Sixth Avenue, we're going to link this into Hadley at the cost of over thirty, forty thousand. And also relating to conservation, which, and these are all things that aren't on the physical property, but the things that are going to help the community and it's good for the community, but also. In addition to that, we've also set aside, at the request of the Conservation Commission, twenty-five thousand dollars towards a study on the situitous brook, and how that functions from a, from an aquifer standpoint. And also, there's next to the, next to Wampatack School is a veranda pool, we're going to clear, clean that up, take all the debris, and also the large marsh area, that's between Oceanside Drive and, and Hadley Road, we're also going to get the guys to clean everything out of there also again, which is an additional cost. But I just brought that up, as I know some of the board members would be aware of that, but there's several things here, and also one of the other things that would be forthcoming is this land down on Oceanside Drive. One of the things the Toll Brothers have facilitated the use of that, that's a pretty important parcel for storm, storm response, and the town's been using that with, with help of that, and it will continue to be so. In that, we're going to defer to the selectmen. We want to get that parcel at one of the times we need it since the smite of the season, along with that large marsh parcel after we clean it up. And so those are a couple of things that are forthcoming also.
You said Sixth Av, is it Sixth or Seventh, Bill, that you're talking about that's going to be completed? I know, I think, I think it's Seventh that stops. Is that, or you said Sixth was going straight through, but it already connects. Are you connecting one of the roads?
No, no, we're talking about the, the water, the water dams as there. So we're going to loop the water so the water's...
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, if the water comes to a dead end, D P W said, we get the water flow. There's a lot of water things, but we're going to go into the municipal area to do that.
Okay.
The other thing which we're going to take care of, working with the D P W, is, there's been a lot of drainage from the town roads under this property, and we're kind of rejiggering this to make it work better, but we're also going to grant whatever easements are necessary to make this so it works as his land, what the land...
Gotcha.
We've been talking with D P W.
The sidewalks, are the sidewalks going just from Sixth to Eleventh, or are you carrying the sidewalks down to Turner?
We're not carrying the sidewalks down to Turner. The Turner, it'll be before, we have, I think, ten or eleven houses between Sixth Avenue down, as far as that goes, we're going to replace the entire sidewalk as it's crumbling out.
Yeah, all right, so that's, goes down to about, I think it's Eleventh, Eleventh Ave, unless it's Tenth. Whatever the one that's the first street. Tony, you've been heavily involved in dealing with some of this.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, well, you know, like any big project that comes to town, it's a, you know, you get your mixed feedback from the citizens. I think in terms of the options that we're going to go on that property, this is going to be great. I hear a lot of good buzz about people that actually are interested in the, the development, so I, I think it's great, and I think, you know, Bill and Toll Brothers together have tried to find a plan that can mitigate, I mean, this, this mitigation is really just for the sewer aspect of it. As Bill mentioned, all that other stuff is just part of the regular process of going through the planning board and zoning board. And we tried to find things that we could put in that area that would support the new people that are going to be living there and the people and the neighbors. And the field, I think, is great, as we just had a presentation before. I think value-wise for the town, we are getting our bang for our buck because Toll Brothers is going to be able to, you know, if we had to pay Toll Brothers to do it, it would cost a lot more money than them doing it, so I think that they are creating value for the town. And then the other two hundred thousand dollars, we've had a number of items that we've talked about, and we'll have to figure out what the best use of that is, anywhere from, you know, beach accessories to water studies to, you know, roads or whatever it happens to be, but, but I think we've done a good job to try and increase the value of that area.
Karen?
A couple of things. Bill, you mentioned that the permits have been registered or...
Yes.
And when is the appeal period for that?
We're all over.
They are all over, okay, it wasn't...
We're ready for it.
The contract is with Toll Brothers Limited Partnership, and I guess this is a question for Cindy, is the exposure to the town, that, I mean, that doesn't look to the corporate parent, does it? And maybe you can explain that to me so that I understand.
It's actually, I'm understanding the applicant, that there is a connection, if there was a problem, we would find a way to connect them.
But does this document...
This document runs directly with the person you're making it with because they're the only people that are before you with a proposal or doing anything. The document also runs with the land, so if they transfer ownership, that is going to be applicable to anyone else. And their parent, if there was something that happened and they didn't go forward, and it wasn't a situation where we could go to someone who is a subsequent buyer, we would definitely go back to the parents.
And you're comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. I, I wanted to just make sure that we, because it's been such a long process, and as you started, you said, it's, it's been very thorough, and I just want to acknowledge the Planning Commission and the Conservation Commission, as well as organized volunteer, uh, community groups that stepped forward to pay attention to this, and it was a lot of work, so thank you for cooperating with them, and thank you to all those volunteers that worked so hard to, to get to this point. The, you mentioned that, that part of the, in part of that process, that there'll be funds going to study the wet, the brook that runs, is it, what's it?
Situate.
So is there any provision if, in the course of that study, it turns out there's a hiccup in the design of the development and the flow of that brook? Is there any provision to what happens if we find a problem?
Well, first of all, there isn't a hiccup, consulting engineers, but that's not the purpose of money. The money has nothing to do with that project. Very simply, the Conservation Commission, one of their long-range projects, wants to look at all of our aquifer sources...
Okay.
And wetland sources, and to see how they interact with each other and what possible things, these are the regulations, or I think the future that you want to do.
Situate being, the headwaters of the Situate is between First Parish and...
Oh, yeah. It's not anywhere near.
It's not even there. That's in Beverly.
I knew that.
I just wanted...
And the last question is actually for Mr. Bedrow. The pri, have we, do we have a sense of the pricing for the water and sewer full survey? And will these funds be adequate for that?
I don't think it'll be adequate for water and sewer.
Okay.
Hope it'll do one, depends on what we do, so the prices have gone anywhere from a hundred to three hundred in the survey, so really depends on what we do, but we hope this will come to release one of them.
Okay. That was my list.
Good. Mara?
I'd just like to echo, you know, thank you for all the work that everybody's done on behalf of town boards as well as all of you. I know it's been a long process, but it's an important project to us, and I love that it's fifty-five and older, and, you know, I think we're adding some valued housing to our town that's much needed. I do have a question, if you could just sort of give me sort of an idea, as you pay for the sewer permits, will those permits be issued in bulk, or, you know, how do you organize that? Is it, once you, like, for the ninety houses in, in the development?
Hundred forty-two condos.
Susan? A hundred forty-two, right, sorry.
So...
Do you do it in, in bunches, or how does that work? I'm just curious how that's going to work.
You pay it in seconds, pay it when you pay for the permit, so...
Right, I understand that.
So if they're going to pull a building permit for a, four, four-unit plot, they pay for all four.
Okay. So that's my question. Is it usually done in four-unit pods, ten-unit pods? How do you foresee that happening?
It's, Dave Bauer with Toll Brothers, it's a building at a time. Most of the buildings are four-unit buildings.
Okay.
Some trees on there. So it's every time we decide to start a building, and typically, we wait for at least two to three buyers to have committed to a building, and then we'll come in and ask for the permit at that time.
Okay.
Tony?
Just one more quick question. In the description of the field, and in the, in the diagram, it said it's a three hundred feet by a hundred and fifty feet, and it says approximately in the, in the wording of the document, is there any way that we could just, I just don't know if, what the right size of the field is to be a soccer field or whatever it is. Can we just work with somebody that knows that, so that it has to be three hundred and
somebody that knows that so that if it has to be 310 feet and 152 feet that we get it right the first time in terms of developing whatever the right size of a field is?
We are already aware that it's probably going to fall just short of a standard soccer field. There's just not enough geography there. But we can certainly look to, once we get out there and start working with the land and do some survey, we can, you know, try and squeeze and get those extra feet.
Yeah, just work with someone so we can get legitimate-sized field so that, I mean, obviously high school sports aren't going to play there, but if there's U-18 soccer club, something or other.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, just to follow up on that, if it's short of a soccer field size, what, what program, what would it be adequate for?
Football.
There's a number of sports that it would fit either a regulation high school type size or, you know, there are plenty of activities that are smaller fields, a practice field, for example. There's just not enough space there to do the full-blown regulation soccer field. It falls just short of that.
So you could do a U-10, U-12, ton of sideways, play cross.
Okay. I just wanted to give an expectation of what we foresee utilizing it for. That's all. Okay. Thanks.
So do you have any, just out of curiosity, names for streets?
We do. They've all been approved.
By the planning board.
They need to have the Goulston family members.
I was just going to say, should have one that's Goulston Way, I would think, at least where they...
They're running on actually approved planes.
Anne Bervine Boulevard.
You approved of the man?
Bervine, Bervine Hollow.
I have a question.
Question from the audience?
Anne Bervine.
Please.
I was under the impression that there would be money. The planning board was looking for a definitive study on the adequacy of our water supply and our sewer supply. And I think we were really adamant about what we were looking for. And sitting here listening to what is transpiring, am I hearing that only one of those two items will be dealt with and not both? Or am I misunderstanding something?
No, you're hearing that the amount of money that's being used, one of them will be actually dealt with, with the use of the funds that they are providing, but the second one's going to have to be funded through the town.
If I may just correct, we haven't voted on what we'll use the money for. So we'll, we can use the money for whatever we want.
So in other words, again, that money may never be used for a definitive study on the adequacy of either our water or our sewer. Am I correct in understanding you?
Correct. That's for the board to decide, but with the money that they're providing, yes. I'm not saying we're not going to.
I understand.
Just the question is, you know, the money's up in the air, the board's going to have to make a decision on it. But the board's committed to taking a look into, just as the planning board, the water adequacy and as well as sewer expansion and the need for INI. So, does that answer it?
Yes. Doesn't mean I'm pleased, but that's okay.
Anyone else?
Well, I agree. I wholeheartedly believe when that discussion comes before the board that it should go towards water and sewer. So that's my thought.
That is the intent?
No, I know. And it's written in here to be a little bit more flexible, but...
That's a discussion the board will have in the short term.
Yeah.
After September 18th.
Can I just interject one? One more thing.
Did you just pull it up?
No, September 30th, $30. October 1st.
I interrupted again. Having attended many of the planning board meetings, I think that the discussion, and Anne, I'm sure will correct me if I paraphrase wrong, is that this is a significant development for the community. It raises all those questions and it behooves the developer as well to make sure that we're going to have the resources that can provide for them. And that was the, I believe, the backstory to Anne's concerns. And I just want to echo that it's of grave concern to everybody up here too that we address that. So having a starting point to start funding that is a great addition. I had one other question just about the actual construction that I don't think I've ever asked is, in the construction subs and development, do you bring all your folks in or do you look to hire locally for some of the construction components and the different elements of the project?
We put every trade out to bid locally and our preference is to use local vendors that are close by, that are hungry to work every day. I can tell you that the trade base, not only in Massachusetts but across the country, is not what it was before the recession and we are, that's one of the areas we're struggling with is to find good qualified vendors that can find the next generation of workers that really left during the recession and decided they didn't want to be a plumber anymore. The average age of a plumber in America is 56 years old. And so it's a real issue for us and we welcome you to spread the word and get us linked up with local vendors that like to, would like to build for us.
Great. That's great.
Laura?
I just wanted to note publicly, we were doing some of the math earlier on the water and just so folks know, I mean, it's .001 percentage of the total usage that this project will have on our water. When you do how many gallons per day, it was 16.8,000 gallons per day. And when you put that up against our 1.83 million per day permit, it really has a nominal impact on the usage. So I just think those numbers are important for folks to understand, especially since it's, you know, it's a very hot topic right now out there. So I just wanted to get that out there.
Good. Any other questions from the audience? Anyone? Motion?
Oh, there it is.
Move that the board select an approve and execute agreement between Toll Mass Land Limited, Land Three Limited Partnership and the Town of Situit dated July 24, 2018.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Jim, do you want?
Okay, seeing that it's nine o'clock, let me ask this to the board. Do you want to take the quick break or do you want to try to push through this? Looks like we have set the town meeting and then we have one-day liquor licenses.
I say soldier on.
Soldier on, okay. All right. So I'll tell you what, our next agenda item would be picking our fall special town meeting date and it's, we've spoken with Kathy Curran about...
Uh, no, Gardner.
Kathy Gardner.
Mrs. Gardner now.
Gardner, I take that back. Is she here? Kathy?
She's not.
No, she left. All right. And she's actually recommended a date for us, which would be November 14, 2018 at the Situit High School as opposed to the Performing Arts Center, only because the Performing Arts Center is already reserved with a play. So right now we're looking at November 14, 2018 for the special town meeting. And apparently it's also been, the town moderator, Richard Bowen, has been approached and he said that he confirmed that that is a good day for him. So what's the board's feeling?
Do we know what's on the agenda? We have a sense of the length of the warrant?
It's right down, probably around nine, 10 articles, more or less. So probably at the end of the day, we'd be looking around 12 or 14 maybe. Quick, especially if we get 250 people.
So you said the performing arts is occupied?
Yeah.
Okay.
That makes it easy.
All righty.
All right.
I don't have a problem with November 14th, if that's what you're asking.
Anybody else?
Motion?
Let's make the motion.
Move to hold the fall special town meeting on November 14 at the Situit High School... Oh, okay. It says location.
It says location.
I thought it was supposed to stop there.
We didn't know that the center of the four yards was not available.
At the Situit High School Gymnasium.
Motion by Ms. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Curran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Got to move on to other new business, which happens to be one-day liquor licenses. So we have one-day liquor licenses for Silent Chef, Silent Chef, Silent Chef, Taylor Made Bartending, Taylor Made Bartending.
There's a new executive.
Ellen McKenzie, Taylor Made, and Hospitable Hostess. The dates they're looking for are July 27, 29, September 30, August 4, August 5, July 29, August 4, and 11, and July 28. So those are the dates of looking. If you want to read the motion, that would be perfect.
Move that the board select and approve one-day wine and malt licenses to Silent Chef for an event in the Situit Maritime Center on July 27 from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Silent Chef for an event at the Situit Maritime Center on July 29 from 6:30 to 10:00 p.m. Silent Chef for an event at the Situit Maritime Center on September 30 from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Taylor Made Bartending for an event at the Situit Maritime Center on August 4 from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Taylor Made Bartending for an event at the Situit Harbor Community Building on August 5 from 7:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. Taylor Made Bartending for an event at the Situit Maritime Center on July 29, 2018 from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Ellen McKenzie for an event at the Situit Maritime Center on August 4 from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Taylor Made Bartending for an event at the Situit Maritime Center on August 11 from 11:00 to 3:00. And the Hospitable Hostess for an event at the Situit Maritime Center on July 28 from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by...
Second.
Ms. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Moving on, discussion, vote, board and committee appointments. And if we can
just get to that, looks like there's just some appointments to the cultural committee. Looks like we have reappointments of Dave Ball, Tom Clark, Linda Ferguson, Stephen Litchfield, and Patrice May. And then also an appointment of a new person, Michelle Wood, to the Situit Harbor Cultural District Committee. Take a motion?
Move to reappoint, oh.
Go ahead.
Is there any discussion?
No.
No? Okay, sorry. I'm glad they're all still stepping forward. Move to reappoint David Ball, Tom Clark, Linda Ferguson, Stephen Litchfield, and Patrice May to the Situit Harbor Cultural District Committee for a term of two years or until successor is named in completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by...
Second.
Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then move to appoint Michelle Wood to the Situit Harbor Cultural District Committee for a term of two years or until a successor is named in completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within 30 days.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Ms. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Great. Moving on to other business. Any liaison reports?
I have a big one.
Karen, go right ahead.
I would like to report to the board and to the community that the corrections made to the community room at the library was successful. You can now hold meetings there and hear everybody.
Excellent.
Good.
That is a big, that's a big thing.
Really is amazing, the quietness.
Yeah.
Great.
Yay. So that was, I'm very happy to report that.
Thank you.
I'm sure the contractor and everybody else is happy to report that. Good. Anything else?
No.
That's it?
That's it.
That's it? Really?
Well, I could go on, but...
Any other liaison reports?
I'll just say when I wasn't there, Karen filled in for me, but Nancy in the town held with the MAPC a terrific municipal vulnerability assessment session with many residents along the coast. Terrific feedback on the amount of information that both Nancy and the MAPC consultant brought forth. The residents were very engaged, lots of ideas. So I think it was really important as we developed that plan moving forward. So it was very successful. I know Jim went, Karen was there, Frank Snow, the CAC, a lot of folks there to help kind of navigate through a lot of the information. So I just want to thank Nancy and the CAC and everybody from the MAPC for putting that together. And thank you Karen for going.
Yeah, I just, there were so many people who came to participate that anybody that was remotely involved in the town got pulled in to run workshops. So, and we had, we were supposed to only have three groups and we ended up with, I think, five or six of people sort of having breakout sessions. It was good.
No, at the rec meeting, we kind of discussed all the topics already tonight, so nothing to do there.
Nothing else, of course, finance?
I have a couple of letters here addressed to Chairman Danahue, July 18. I'm writing regarding the commercial, the business of commercial compost and go green located on the Driftway. I'm concerned about the possible lack of environmental compliance by this company and the impact that may have on our community. I met in 2017, I met with Health Agent Jennifer Keith regarding the company's compliance with DEP site assignment. The purpose of this regulation is to quote, "Protect public health, safety, and environment by comprehensively regulating operations which recycle, compost, or convert recyclables to organic materials", end quote. Mrs. Keith was going to review the regulation and company compliance, but I have yet to receive her findings to date. After researching commercial composting compliance, I believe the company is in violation of Mass DEP Regulation 310 CMR. Also in 2017, I spoke with Douglas Coppe of the Mass DEP who agreed with my questioning the following. One, multiple compost piles over two stories height. Two, numerous days of odor emanating from the site. Three, constant pressure of the airborne particles at entrance and exit. Mass DEP regulations state, one, requirements that owner and operator operate in a manner that prevents any unpermitted discharges or pollutants of air, water, land, or natural resources of the Commonwealth does not create a public nuisance, as does a not significantly, significant threat to public health, safety, or environment. Two, requirements for establishing the operation at appropriate distances from sensitive human environmental receptacles such as residence, schools, public and private water, supplies, wetland streams, and rivers. Three, requirements for an odor control plan that is appropriate for the size and type of operation that will minimize production and migration of odorous compounds and that identifies specific actions to be taken and address complaints if acceptable odors occur beyond property line of the operation. Mr. Coppe stated that Mass DEP will not investigate unless there is a significant number of complaints to their hotline and/or written requests to DEP by town officials. It is my understanding that the lease for this town operation, own up property is up for renewal in 2019. Therefore, I'm asking the selectmen to consider the following. Is this business in compliance of Mass DEP 310 CMR? Two, if not, investigate issues of non-compliance of this business, including a request that Mass DEP inspect the property. Three, who is responsible for determining or enforcing compliance preventing violations? How often is the site inspected? Thank you for your attention to this matter. I look forward to your response respectfully submitted by Lisa Croft Smith of First Parish Road.
And I can just respond that I'll respond to her, but also that we're looking into it. Clearly, there seems to be a lot of material stacked and a lot of backup onto Kent Street, strike that onto Driftway with a lot of debris and things, dust. So I think it's, the town is going to look into because it's, seems a lot, the use is much larger than what was intended. So we'll look at that and I'll certainly respond to her.
On fun note, I have a flyer for the, announcing the 50th anniversary celebration of Situit Heritage Days. I know this is online and you can go and see all of the activities that will be on Front Street and in the area August 4 and 5. And I do also know that they are looking for community service volunteers. So you can contact the chamber if you're interested in that. We have a letter dated July 18 to, addressed to the fire chief and copying the board. Dear Chief Murphy, last Thursday, July 12, my wife and I were attending Situit's Knights of Columbus Carnival. When I fell, hit my head and skinned my knee. Members of the Situit Fire and Police Department were immediately on the scene and dealt with my injuries. I would like to commend them for their swift, courteous, and professional actions. Immediately on the scenes were EMTs Danny Mendez, Barry Shea, Jeff James, A.J. Ford, and Paul Dunn. In the ambulance were Jim Sixtiger, Mike Ellers, and Pat Riley, all of whom gave excellent advice, sympathy, and of course, Situit humor, all of which was greatly appreciated. They waited with Rosie, assured her, reassured her, and friends followed us home. It's been six days and I'm feeling fine. Thanks again. Matt Brown of Tilden Road. We are all invited to, is this a, am I supposed to read this one?
No.
You have to just read it.
I thought so. Sorry, I probably were invited. And am I to read the notice of suspension?
Yes.
On July 19, 2018, the Town of Situit received notice of suspension from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of the Treasury Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. Can I summarize?
Yes.
Okay.
Please do.
That the commission found that Front Street Liquor doing business, the Situit Package Store was in...
Also known as Snappy's, Captain Snappy's.
Captain Snappy's was in violation of Mass Law 138 for serving alcohol to a person under 21. They were suspended for a five-day period to be held in abeyance for a period of two years provided no further violations occurred.
Basically, they can't sell alcohol from 9:5 to 9:7.
Right, yeah. So the suspension commences Wednesday, September 5, terminates on September 7. And that would be all of the correspondence, sir. Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry, there's another one stuck in the back. I will summarize. July 11, we received a letter from the Town of Situit...
Waterways?
Waterways Commission recommending that we explore oyster, Situit oyster harvesting business. And it's a three-page letter.
They supported it.
They supported it, yes. They strongly supported it.
The idea of creating oyster beds around Situit areas and they're recommending that we further explore it and put a seash, a shell commission together? A shell of a commission, how about that? No, Situit, what is it, potential... No, a Situate, what is it, potential, a shellfish commission to further explore it, which seems like a good thing to do, and I'm certainly supportive, so that's something we can talk about in the future. Good job, thank you.
John, one quick question?
Yes.
Lauren, do we note, because, because the ABCC got that judgment, and it didn't come before the town, do we note those in their records, so in case they ever come before us for another violation, that we could take into account?
Yeah.
Good. Good. Final, we have the minutes, acceptance of minutes, for July 10, 2018.
Move to accept the minutes for the Board of Selectmen meeting held on July 10, 2018.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and there, that's it, no more, not executive, but, good.
Adjournance.
All right, then.
Move to adjourn and sign documents?
I'll take that motion, Ms. Vignani, seconded by...
Second.
Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, folks, thank you.